We'll call meeting to order in the Deerfield Elementary School Committee on January 5th, 2022. It seems strange to say that. It's 6:02 PM. I will note that this meeting is being recorded and it is a virtual meeting of the Elementary School Committee. So, Happy New Year, everyone.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. The first order of business is the minutes of November 9th, 2021.
Motion to approve?
Seconded.
Thank you. I'm assuming no discussion, so we'll take a roll call vote. Ken Cutterback, yes? Carrie Etchols?
Yes.
David Sharp?
Yes.
And Mary Raymond?
Yes.
Erica Jacob?
Yes.
It is unanimous, 5-0. Financial statement, warrants, and Shelley?
Hi, everyone. Happy New Year.
Yes, same here.
Thank you. So I did send out an email that we do not have a formal financial update this month. I did send you the expense reports. I'm happy to take questions if you do have them. The expense reports look a little different than they normally would this time of year because we're still trying to get payroll up and running. If you remember, in September, I did explain that we were working on getting payroll into the database. So a lot of the salary lines right now, you actually see don't have any expenditures because we're working on that process still. So, otherwise, if you have regular expense questions, I'm happy to take them. And we do have two months of warrants that were signed to report on. There were 23 totaling
Okay. So, well, thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Shelley?
Nope.
Okay, well, that's good.
Maybe we'll get to the budget section.
What's that?
I said we may have some later on in the agenda.
Oh, I would think on the budget section, and I would hope we would have some questions, so.
That's why you think we're all asleep, aren't you?
I noticed we still have the principals' report at the beginning of the meeting. Would you like to give your report now or later, Tina?
I'm flexible, whatever makes sense for you.
Well, since it's on the agenda, let's have you do it.
All right. So it's a little lengthier than usual, so I apologize. We didn't get to meet in December, and we have so many things to brag about that happened at the school. And you know, what a good place to do it, right? So, under professional development category, we have gathered staff superpowers, and we're fortunate to have many in-house experts willing to share their superpowers and a staff that welcomes learning from each other. So moving forward in March, we are putting together a faculty meeting around, or PD, around supporting students who are struggling with regulation and have a trauma background. We also have the author of Cultivating Genius, Goldie Muhammad, returning on January 14th. Shout out to Meg Shulda for getting her back here again. We extend our learning and focus on our culturally responsive education from the fall as we dig deep into the five pursuits of her goals, the pursuit of a historically responsive literacy framework that we're excited about seeing her again. Some general information, inspired by the Monty's March, an annual fundraiser for the Food Bank of Western Mass, our DES kindergarten students organized a march of their own. And they marched up and down our school, collecting donations for the food bank, and they raised over $1,000. We also would like to thank Yankee Candle for their generous donation. We are thankful they recognize the importance of education and fortunate to have them as a support. But we also wrapped up a UNICEF coin collection right before the break, and our final count was $850, which includes a matching donation from a faculty member, and a few other donations right after the holiday. A huge shout out to Gretchen Law for organizing that. Some of you are parents also, so you might have got my, let's call it unpolished, video showing everybody about our winter doors. So just prior to break, we worked as a community to infuse our building with winters here. The fire marshal was not here, so we got away with it. Students and educators enjoyed creating winter scenes on their classroom doors and admiring the creativity of their neighboring doors. Students also participated in a voting march, and there were wing winners announced. And we even did share our fun with our family. Shout out to Lori Roach for really organizing this and getting that up and going. I also would like to thank our diversity and leadership team because we have scheduled activities again for January 21st as we celebrate Martin Luther King Day. Jen Smith, B. Segal, Giselle Richardson, Lori Conlin for supporting the DFC group, and our students for leading the way. I have some student news. Going through, making sure I got that. Yep. So our classroom news, in the fall, our kindergarten classes enjoyed learning and playing in our newly established outdoor classroom, which they say felt a little bit more woodsy until the tree fells. And now there's that one out, I mean, that's lilies fell, and now there's that one out in the spot. Our second grade balance classroom has spent much of the fall term studying science and the college field bills. They're funny. I'll let you read about that. Our fourth grade classrooms enjoyed a field trip for the canyon last month, and our best group, which is a group that works on social emotional learning, held a pet guide during December, and they gathered over 300 pounds worth of supplies for the animal shelter. Last, and perhaps most importantly, we would like to recognize Gretchen Law. Hi, Gretchen, I know you're here. After 33 years of service to the Deerfield Elementary School, she will begin her retirement letter this month. Gretchen is admired for her ability to quickly build rapport and grab a hold of her learners, creating a safe and supportive environment where students take academic risks, learning as they go, and thriving under her instructions. She's able to coach the most reluctant learners to achieve their full potential. It's not too magical, but she's also a trusted colleague who steps up selfishly and without hesitation to support her peers. She's the five wing rock, which, after being magical, maybe she's like a diamond because she's powerful. She's always there when they're needed, and she quietly is waiting for those who choose to lean in with her. You could not ask for a more faithful, dedicated, and supportive colleague or friend. Okay, this is where it gets a little emotional. Gretchen will always have a home at DES, and she's truly going to be missed by her DES family. We love you, Gret. Thank you for letting me do that. I thought you had a choice to enjoy.
Thank you for that, Tina, and obviously, thank you, Gretchen, for your years of service, and we'll miss having you in the school. But you've got good things to look forward to. So, thank you, Tina. Public comment, we had no public comment this evening that I'm aware of. I was not contacted with any, so we're into unfinished business and a COVID-19 update.
Yeah, so, you guys here. So, yeah, so we're in the middle of a spike, as we all kind of know. I did send out some information to families just prior to our return. We did some of the major changes that we have done in the last few days is that we've gone to a dashboard approach through the feedback that we see from parents that, you know, constantly receiving the same kind of form letter was not helpful. We wanted to have a better idea about what the numbers were and have more transparency what was happening. And that, within anticipation of rising numbers, we went to a dashboard approach, which was emailed out to all families and is also on our central webpage. Is that your Deerfield page? I know Frontier is linked to the central page, central office page, but you can find it there under the COVID materials. If you haven't, Tina will probably put it on the website before. Anyway, the next thing we also did is there has been change from CDC guidelines regarding how to treat what close contacts are and how long, when people do get COVID, how long do they have to be out from school. And the CDC did reduce that to five days if you are not, do not have symptoms. And there's a whole kind of thing, and we have that on our website as well to explain. So that's kind of changed things of how COVID is going through both staff members and students in our school. We also are happy to report that there is going to be a vaccination bus coming, another one, and for those in the community and students and those looking to get booster shots, you're going to be able to find that at Deerfield Elementary on January 14th at 12:30. I'll be doing a push out of that information. I'm supposed to get to that today, so it might go out first thing tomorrow, unless Meg's doing it right now. So, yeah, so that's good to know. And they're also trying to plan another one in early February. Time and place to be determined, but they're trying to line that up. I believe it might land in Wheatley, but the Boards of Health are taking the lead on this one. So we'll see what happens there. Yeah, that's kind of in a nutshell. I'm sure there's probably questions, you know, right now on their dashboard. It's kind of very transparent. We did have 41 cases in our district in three days, which kind of broke all, doesn't break, didn't break all the school records, but it's certainly as a whole, Deerfield Elementary is doing okay right now, is pretty low in comparative to what's happening in the community, which is good. There's also, you know, the numbers that you see in those, in that dashboard is only what's reported to us. Now that the ability, that people have the ability to test at home and do things like that, and then choose not to report to the school, you know, those numbers are probably lower than what's actually happening in our school community at each building because people could, and also the way that COVID is affecting different people, you know, I'm hearing stories of people having a slight sniffle, coming up positive, and that's all they've had, to, you know, people being bedroom. Yeah, I will say, you know, and there's a lot of controversy out there about whether or not vaccines work and whether or not the booster works. And totally, from what I've seen in the community, if you've been vaccinated boosted, it's a very mild, at least the new strain out there's been a very mild occurrence for people who've gotten COVID. So versus those who aren't vaccinated, and seeing that just because it's being reported to me. But so I encourage people to go that route. Trust what you see out there. If you don't trust what you're reading on the back pages of the internet. So, yeah, that's where we're at. Okay.
Darius, I just have a quick question about logistics of the dashboard. I'm loving it so far. I'm just curious if, is everything uploaded across all the schools at one point every day? Like, if I see one school has two cases recorded, does that mean every other school has zero so far? Or does it just kind of trickle in over the course of the day? And then are pool testing, is that already in there? Are those results added there too?
So I added a little asterisk on the today's date to let everybody know it was a pool testing day. So it was added late in the afternoon today. Meg does it, I believe, at the, tries to do it in the afternoon. I will say that, you know, it is, you know, it's as accurate as we can make it at the time. So, you know, there are times where the school is still tracing down things late into the afternoon. Principals are making phone calls, and other contact tracers are making phone calls, and then, oop, they found another one. Oh, you know, you know, sibling, another sibling's been out, and then we just had another test, and oh, while I have you, let me, I'll tell you that, you know, we have COVID. You know, so we're getting those kind of things, and those will be added to the dashboard. So it's not a, it's not as strong as what you're getting from the state earlier, the Board of Health was getting, which was confirmed cases through, this is, you know, some of this is word of mouth because we do allow home testing now. The CDC does a lot, but we do have to go, there is some trust in the community that they're going to tell us, and there's going to be some trust both ways. They're going to tell us when they started so that we can give them proper information about when they can come back to school. So, and that's a, that was a decision made above. So whether or not we agree that's how it should be done, that's how it is.
All right. Well, those numbers are including the pool testing. I think they're pretty good for today.
Deerfield's doing very well, but I'll tell you, the numbers in the community are a lot higher, so.
Oh, yes.
As to if and when, or people are keeping kids out of school when they're sick, and that can be happening too.
Oh, pardon. I just had a terrifying question. If that, does the dashboard now mean that we are not going to get the messages that we used to get that you were talking about the, if there, if anything?
You won't get daily messages. You will be notified if your child was in close contact. I mean, you'll get directions at that point. And so, yeah, so you're not going to get the daily messages every time there's a new one. So people, the report I got, and I think I would agree, people started just to ignore them, and some people felt it was anxiety building. If it wasn't directly affecting me, we know COVID's out there. So trying to do a balanced approach. At the end of the week, we will do a summary, a summary report out for people to kind of remind people to take a look, but not the daily as they come up. And then we'll revisit it. If this surge is exactly what we want it to be, a surge, and then COVID's over, we can hope. You know, and at the end of the month, all of a sudden, we're talking about no cases for, or very few cases, and then maybe we will go back to notifying people the way, you know, based on how they need to be notified based on the information we're giving them.
Sure. I know, I certainly appreciate getting the messages of the pooled testing results. I mean, that's more, I don't know if that is something that, that still is going to, or is that part of the dashboard also, the pooled?
Yeah, honestly, this is our first week with the dashboard, our first three days with the dashboard, and.
It looks great.
It looks very colorful, unfortunately. It's supposed to look very white across the line, no colored lines going through. But, you know, I could talk with principals about, maybe we could do, you know, the update there or refer people to. The idea was, it's also a lot of work.
I'm sure.
You know, we don't have a dedicated staff member, but we can find out. We'll take feedback and try to, we want people to have the information, but balanced approach there.
Sure. No, that's great. Thank you for thinking of these things.
Darius, can I just ask, is it just the student count, or is it a building count? It would include staff and faculty as well?
The building count.
Building count.
Yeah.
Thanks.
And again, just to, if we also get notification, it doesn't have to be, before, like, when we reported to the state, like, we had a diagnosis in school, we had to have kind of confirmation. Now, if we're making a phone call home, and someone said they did a home test, and they said they're positive, we're trying to put those numbers in as well. So, it's, so it's going to be more in numbers because it's a little bit looser gathering, but I guess, again, it's a general idea of what's going on. People should not be, you know, gosh, I heard of two, and there's only one in the system today. You know, that's possible. There's also when, not to go on a side turn, but when you get pool tests back, you know, we had a number of pool tests that came back, and they weren't all positive. Some of them were retested, and there was no positive cases, or there was an error in how it was packaged. So they make you retest, or there was an error in the lab. We don't know what was wrong. We just know there's an error that we have to retest. So there's a lot of, unfortunately, there's a lot of those. When we sent out 149 tubes, 140 something, 47, 49, something like that. And so, you know, we had 21 tubes come back today, or 27 tubes come back today as positives, and some of them were cleared. You know, they tested everybody on site and then didn't find anybody. So, there could be several reasons for that, but it could also be that you had a positive, that that thing got cleared and didn't come up as positive later, but that gets really complicated. We won't go down that road.
Ready? Thank you, Darius. Capital Improvement Plan update. Anything new to report on capital plan?
I was actually hoping you were going to report back to us, so I submitted all of them, and I don't know where the Capital Improvement Committee sits right now, Ken, so we put you on the spot. Have you guys met? Have you made any?
The Capital Improvement Committee did meet, and we went and did a reorganization and went over the initial items. So the, the plans that were submitted by the school have been noted and put into the plan. And we will, we will be meeting much more frequently going into later this month and into February, obviously. So I will provide a feedback on the next meeting, but nothing to report beyond that. They duly acknowledged our requests, and we'll go from there once, once things clear up. So, thank you.
And Ken, was there any talk about whether or not they were going to be able to, so some of the, Shelley, help me with the MAGRIM money. I've lost it, the COVID money.
ARPA funds?
Yeah, the ARPA funds. When they talk about the ARPA funds, being able to address any of the stuff on our list, I did kind of let them know if they were able to address it that way. We wouldn't ask for more. It would just be a different pot of money they could pull from.
Right. They, they weren't prepared to fully address that in the meeting. So that's, you know, that's kind of why we're still up in the air a little bit, but hopefully, yes, they'll be able to, you know, we'll be able to take care of some of those things with ARPA funds.
So for the other members, the ARPA funds, each town was given a lot of money from the, I won't say a lot of, depends on what your measure of money is, makes it worse, like a lot, was given money to look at, you know, issues that were caused by, by COVID in expenses, and some of our capital improvements could be considered, you know, a new, a new dishwasher, sanitization, that kind of stuff, might fall under those funds, but, you know, looking at where the, you know, where the town was going to buy up those funds, we're kind of putting some of those in kind of earmarking that you might be able to pay for it a different way, rather than going after their, you know, their free cash or warrant, you know, warrant for cash.
So, yes. So we've had a lot of upheaval on the, on the capital planning committee. So, we, we spent as much time talking about all the various departments in town as we did about specifics. So we'll be getting down to more of the funding level in the next few meetings. So, so that's it. New business, presentation of draft budget for FY '23. And I will point out, prior to Shelley taking over, that this is indeed our first look at the budget. I know Julie is, Julie Chauvin is on, listening, and wanted to know what, what we'd be discussing tonight. And this is our first pass, and it's our first chance to really take a look and ask questions. So it's kind of a, it's the, being the first pass, it has all of Tina's needs and thoughts for next year in it, and will obviously be refined over the next two or three meetings prior to our submission to the Select Board and Finance, final submission to the Select Board and Finance Committee. But with that being said, I'll turn it over to Shelley and Tina and Darius.
Great. I'm going to share my screen. I did send you all out the report, but I'm going to go ahead and share that so that anyone watching can see.
I think Ken did say exactly what needed to be said. This is kind of, we wanted to show where we start from. We know this needs polishing. It needs to be, initially, it's a little high. We want to be to see where we're starting.
Yes, that is exactly right. So the first draft that we've included here takes into account our existing programs, staffing, and level funding. And level funding does, or level service does not necessarily mean level funding. So when we look at the existing staffing and programs, we take any COLA into consideration, whether we're increasing expense accounts because they were underfunded from prior years based on our actuals, or if we take into consideration contract negotiations. We are still working on the teacher and the IA contracts, but we build in a placeholder for increases for our teachers and RIAs. We also build in placeholders for any non-union staff. So the support staff at the school, administrative staff, central office staff. So all of that stuff is taken into consideration as the first step. And then from there, we do look at new initiatives, new staffing that we might need, or new programs for the upcoming year. So this initial draft is higher than we know it needs to be when we come to submitting it to the town. But in order to have transparency and make sure that all of those wants and needs are discussed openly in this forum, we do include them in this first draft. So after looking at all of those pieces, the first draft of the budget does come in at a 5.23% increase over the prior year. And then we will use another $850,000 roughly of revolving and grant monies to fully fund the operating budget. So we're going to talk about what that 5.23% makes up, because I know that that's always a big question of how do we get there. So as I said, obviously, we consider any contract obligations or other COLA increases. Can everyone see that, or is it too small? Let me make it a little bit bigger. And then, as I said, we look at new initiatives. So there is $60,000 in here for a new faculty position. I'll let Tina speak to the importance of that position and why that is included as a want for next year. But it would be on the teacher contract and instructional coaching position to provide direct support to existing teaching staff. We also have a $25,000 wage increase to add additional time for our certified occupational therapist assistant to move up from 0.4 to 1 FTE, which obviously would provide additional therapy interventions based on student needs. The next bullet point here of an increase of $20,000 in wages for an additional IA is actually not adding a new staff member. However, because we added a staff member this year after the budget was already approved, we did have a student who needed some additional services, and I believe in the IEP had a one-to-one, and we did have to provide that for this year. We had savings from other line items and have been able to fund that without having any budgetary constraints this year. However, in '23, it does hit as a full increase to the budget. So it's not actually adding a staff person for next year. It's just adding additional money to the budget. This next bullet point has actually changed slightly. However, I did not change the numbers because this had already gone out to you all. So this will be having a very minor impact. I did explain here, we have a $40,000 increase to cover nursing staffing, and one of those factors is the nurse leader position. So that position has gone full-time over the last couple of school years. However, it has been primarily funded by a grant that is run through Frontier. This year, the current school year that we're in, the grant is covering less than it has in prior years. Next year, the grant is covering none of that position, and it's fully hitting all five of the schools on the budget. So that's a significant portion of this increase. But the second piece of it, Tina and I had originally talked about when we built the first draft, moving, there were two part-time nurses at Deerfield this year, LPNs, so we were talking about moving that position to full-time, but my understanding is that that is going to remain a part-time, 20-hour position. So that'll have a minor change when we come back for the second draft. We are looking to increase wages for summer staffing in our summer school program to be able to continue to provide a rigorous and a robust summer program. $20,000 increase to the technology-related expenses, and those are not new initiatives. That is simply to properly fund existing software and network expenses. If any school committee member did look at our monthly or year-to-date budget reports, you will see that a lot of the software and network accounts are over budget currently. We tried to make minor increases last year when we built the budget. However, over the last couple of years, we've either changed programming. For instance, we're now using, was it Parent Square, is our new platform to communicate. Well, that has a different price tag than the previous platform that we were using. And there's also other curriculum-related software programs that we've added over the last few years. So what I'm trying to do here is write those accounts so that we're not continuously going over budget because they are programs that we want to continue to maintain. And then finally, we are seeing a $9,000 increase to employee separation costs, and that's based on sick buyback payouts due to retirement. So that's over the prior year. And then I did talk about that, wage adjustments already. Before I keep going, I want to pause and see if anyone has questions, or if Tina wants to jump in at all to talk any further about those new faculty and quota positions. Any questions around those positions, or? Nothing? Okay. Carrie Etchols has her hand up, but I don't actually think I'm supposed to be calling on people, so I'll just mute.
I pressed the wrong button. I meant to unmute myself. I was just wondering if you could speak more about the instructional coaching position, like what it does and like where, how you're seeing the need for it, and our teachers asking. I was just wondering if you could speak more about the instructional coaching position, like what it does and like where, how you're seeing the need for it and our teachers asking for this sort of thing.
Great question, Carrie. Yeah. So this year, our instructional leadership team, which is made up of our full-time teachers and teaching staff, have jumped in to provide some coaching to our new teachers. This, we don't have, we are working towards, speaking of positively, having a robust, a robust onboarding program for new teachers to get kind of caught up with how we do things in Deerfield, what the curriculum is and instruction and just having that mentor role doesn't seem to be support enough. So this position would do that. But I also see this position working directly with students for student, for student impact, particularly around the lagging skills that we're seeing due to COVID and some of that remote learning. So this position would be working directly with students or teachers, mining for gaps, but also supporting new teachers and other teachers in the role. It's going to be a very diverse position.
Well, I'm just curious whether you fear that the other elementary schools in the district will see this and want to poach this person for their new onboarding hires? And is that, just do you see that as a possibility if that's a large part of their role?
As being a district? Oh, no. So I'm only talking about Deerfield onboarding. I'm sorry if I wasn't clear, David.
No, no, no. I know that's all you're talking about, that it's a Deerfield position, but it sounds like you're saying a big emphasis is on supporting the new teachers, which I suppose there probably are one or two each year.
Oh, this, yeah, this year we saw a kind of, we have, I don't know, four new teachers right now. But that's not only for that. I think as every year as we get one or two teachers coming in. Can't see your face, so I can't tell if I'm actually answering the question correctly. I need to read your eyes. So I, I guess I'm not sure why, what the question is, whether they'd be going to the district?
No, no, I just, I'm sorry. I just heard a large emphasis of, of this was on, on supporting new teachers.
So not just new teachers either. So sometimes there's teachers right now, our ILT is working with some veteran teachers that are asking our coaches or our ILT for support around, how do I get this child to move in writing? So it could be a support to veteran teachers. It could be a support to new teachers, but also working directly with the students as well as in an intervention as well.
Okay, great. So more school-wide resource then?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Thanks. Yeah, Tina, the last line you didn't emphasize in the beginning, I think that may have got people confused. This, this teacher does work with students.
Sorry. Yes.
Right.
Big part of the role will be working directly with students.
I noticed the $9,000 increase to the employee separation costs. And can you give us an idea of what the total sick leave buybacks are?
Yep. Hold on one second. Let me pull it up.
And how many retirements do we have planned for next year or are we aware of for next year?
So we're looking at an estimate right now of a $31,000 payout. And I don't have the spreadsheet in front of me as far as whether or not that's two staff members or one staff member. My guess is it's two. It could be even a couple of IAs that I think if I'm remembering right, gave notice last year and, and another faculty member.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Last year we had 22,000 budgeted and I, it's like 30,500 and change is the estimate.
That's good. Thank you.
Sure. So I couldn't keep going if, because there's some data points that on, and then we can talk about next steps. So I'm going to make this a little bit smaller because it's hard to see the whole chart, I think. Or it is on my screen at least. So I, I threw in a lot of data here for you to look at. I'm not going to go through all of it, but I felt like there were some key points to show everyone. And just, this is the breakdown of what the budget increase is comprised of by function code. And function code is something that is set by the state through DESI. They create these categories and we're required to report on them. So this is how we build our budget. So anything in 1,000 is administration, which really covers business office, superintendent's office and school committee. 2,000 for education and instruction is principal's office and then anyone that's considered in a teaching position or supplies and materials, curriculum-related items. 3,000 under student services is the health office. So any of our nursing staff. It also includes transportation, student activities and athletics, although that does not apply to Deerfield. Just that would apply to Frontier only. 4,000 operations and maintenance. So that's primarily facilities and IT technology that's not related to curriculum. It's more infrastructure and network-based. And then 5,000 is benefits and insurance, which does include the sick buybacks. It does not include benefits that the town pay. Obviously that's separate than, than here. And then 9,000 is our out-of-district placements. So you can see the percentage there on the far column of what the 5.23% makes up. And then I also gave you some data points about the salaries and how those increases compared to non-salary expenditures are impacting the budget. So of the total increase, we're looking at almost 79% of that being related to salaries and wages, some of which is from the new positions. That's not strictly cost of living adjustments or raises for staff. It does include the new initiatives that we talked about already. So the remaining 55,000 or 56,000 is for non-salary expenditures. And then I wanted to also give you the breakdown of how much of our wages make up the total budget. So the total budget wages are about 78% and then the remaining 21, 22% or so is non-salary expenditures. I also gave you some historical information of what the budget has been in the past. You can see it's varied over the years, but typically no less than 2.4 over the last few and last year was 3.35. We did have the one year where we did a zero budget increase. We level service built that budget, but did make cuts or move to other funding sources so that we could have a zero increase to the town. And also just a reminder that last year on the town meeting floor, we also pulled $50,000 off of the budget to bring the number down slightly as well.
Not the budget, you mean we pulled the, we also pulled the capital.
We pulled the capital, but we did 50,000 for the budget as well.
Right.
Right. If you, if you added in those capital requests onto that budget line or reduced it, you understand what I'm saying? You also reduced it last year as well.
Yeah. And, and I would, you know, the, the total budget you show here is the total budget submitted to the town. It's not the total operating budget, correct? It's not the 5 million, 5.2 or that includes grants and.
No, this is just general fund, just general fund that impacts the town finances.
Right. And just, just wanted to make that clear to those that are listening for the first time or hadn't seen this particular presentation and it's just the general fund that's submitted to the town. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I just follow up on that, Ken? No, I'm sorry. Erica, did you put a hand up?
Okay.
You're muted, Erica.
Thanks. Sorry. Yeah. If I can just throw in a question. I was just wondering about how the, sorry, it's not up on the screen now, but the, is it student services that were the health department and yeah, the 3,000, you said health, sports, which isn't applicable to Deerfield and activities. And I, I wasn't, I was kind of looking to see where like, whether it's in education, instruction or in student services or things like professional or professional development and like social emotional learning aspects of, of instruction. I wasn't sure like where that kind of stuff gets funded, like if there's, and you know, I know that there was stuff that was going on last year with the teachers doing, you know, anti-racism instruction and, and, or just learning about anti-racism or other, or just even social emotional learning, which I know is in a component of curriculum. I was just wondering if that's something that has a, a different, like where it fits in the budget lines? And if that's something that is added, you know, or is it just incorporated in what the, in, in what's already talked about or are there any developments there, things like that?
So anything in regards to what you're asking about would fall under the 2,000 function code. And you will get a complete budget that has a line-by-line item as we narrow this down. So you'll be able to see more refined details as we go through our process here. But all of those things, any faculty that are considered support for social, emotional or any other kind of therapy, those kind of things, psychologists, guidance counselors, any of our OTPT services, that all falls under the 2,000 function code. Professional development for our teachers, whether we're sending them out to a workshop or bringing someone in, no matter what the topic is, that all also falls under the 2,000 function code.
Well, and is there any relation between the, the, that additional staffing position and sort of the mentor for things like in terms of, is that, does that include like how they can access professional development and stuff like that? Or I mean, maybe that's details that as you're saying would come from later, later information. I'm just curious as to if it's, it's, yeah, I'm not really sure what I'm asking, but I'm, I was just kind of curious as to how, how it fits into the sort of the culture of the, of this. It sounds like it's something that helps to bolster the, the culture and the feeling of camaraderie and, and, and you know, team, a team, the feeling of a team on, on staff. So I was just wondering sort of how that, how that gels with, with all of the, the, the great efforts you, you're making. So I'll wait for details unless you have any others to add now, but thank you.
I don't have specifics on, on the job description myself, but I'm, I'm sure Tina could get into greater detail if it is something that we're going to continue to talk about and include in the budget. Great. Thanks. All right. So the last piece is I wanted to show you the enrollment data because I think that's also important for us to talk about the enrollment drives, the chapter.
Asking about a budget question before you get into that? I'm sorry.
Yep.
Sorry to interrupt the flow. I just wanted to piggyback on what Ken's comment in terms of bringing attention to the fact that we're talking about the general fund and sort of what that increase shows. But can you comment on what the percentage increase is in terms of the total operating budget for this next budget compared with the last years?
Sure.
Because there's that throwaway line of, you know, using the additional funds from various revolving funds and grant monies of 870, 40, 846,000. So I'm just wondering, when you look at the total budget, operating budget, what, what, what kind of percentage are we looking at?
Just give me one second to quickly pull both of those up. So last year, the, the total expenses, including all funds, or the current year that we're in, 22, was 5.5 million. So we're seeing a, you know, almost a $500,000 increase there. So let me get you the exact percentage.
So you're, you're looking at a, well.
I gotta do everything in Excel, David. If you can do it faster than me, please do. I'm so much on Excel these days.
So you're looking at about eight and a half percent.
Eight percent or so. Correct. Yeah.
Just throwing it out there. It's just another data point to think about when we think about budgeting in general going forward.
And, and as you, as you bring that up, David, I noticed that when you say a total general fund budget of 5,257, if you add 846,000 to 5,257, I think.
Don't tell me my math is wrong.
I think that might add up to a little bit more than 5,967. I think it's over 6 million total.
Uh oh. You know, you rely on data and technology and see what happens.
Used to happen to me all the time. Someone would always come in and mess my spreadsheets up when I went to the finance committee. So.
Let me do this. Let's get it right. You are spot on, Mr. Carterback. Look at, this is the beauty of a live document.
There we go.
So it's going to be more than eight point, you know, whatever we just talked about, 8.39.
It's going to be over 10%.
Yeah.
So.
And it's 10.87. Thank you for catching that.
Right. But I'm assuming most of that is grant and, and the revolving funds obviously helped absorb some of it. Is any of that intended to be, that's not school choice?
So it doesn't include our school choice allocation as well, which is about 470,000 of that 846.
Okay.
Yep.
Very good.
All right. Anything else? Okay. I'll go back to enrollment and then we can continue. Enrollment. Okay. So enrollment is important to look at because enrollment drives the chapter 70 funding from the state. It also helps us determine how many sections we're going to have for each grade in the following year and how much staffing is needed. So you can see we did have a decline, you know, as expected over the last couple of years with the pandemic. However, we are building back up. We're always a year behind in the enrollment numbers. The state uses the prior October numbers in order to build that chapter 70 formula. So even if our enrollment is higher next year, doesn't matter. We're not going to get any more money because they're basing it on the prior year. But I think that this is good data for you all to look at. If you have questions, I'm sure we can, can try to answer them.
My, my main question is, and I know this is, you know, the first pass, there's, there's obviously a couple of classes in here. As I was looking at enrollments, data that was sent to us that are pretty low. I don't know how many class sections are in them, but I noticed the, is it the, I gotta get back. What's that?
I think you're probably looking at first grade with 27.
First grade with 27, fourth grade with, no, not fourth grade. Sixth grade is leaving. So but third grade is it, you know, is that a borderline number, third going into fourth or whatever? So it's, it's going to be an interesting discussion. Go ahead, Tina.
First and sixth grade have two sections of class. So I don't know if that's helpful as you're looking at the numbers.
Which ones?
First and sixth.
Are two, two sections. That, that does help me.
Yeah. And enrollment is one of the things that we talk about as part of the budget process, you know, looking at shifting staffing around. You know, the current sixth grade class is smaller than next year's sixth grade class. So we have to consider, do we shift to sixth grade into three sections? And you know, what is the ripple effect from there? And I think at least the three years I've been here, this conversation comes up every year as, as one of the things we talk about, you know, can we reduce a class? I think we reduced a pre-K class a couple of years ago because the numbers were small and it worked out timing wise because someone was retiring. So it's definitely part of the discussion that Darius, Tina and I are having.
Right. So it, I mean, I'm just bringing it up because it, you know, it's something that unfortunately we have, you have to work through and you don't get clear answers for another meeting or two. And I know you have to go, go through a whole number of iterations to get, get to the final numbers, but you know, will we, will we be reducing to two sections in more than two classes? It's, it's hard to say. And then you're, then you have to shift your faculty around. It's it's hard to say. And then you're then you have to shift your faculty around. I I understand that, but I just wanted to point out to people that again, we we've got the the lower enrollment, so.
Yeah, and when you shift to two sections, you know, not only does it impact the existing staffing and the existing students, but it impacts the amount of school choice students, new choo school choice students that we could take. So, you know, there that that's sort of a catch twenty-two, right? You you want to make sure you're not pushing school choice so that you're having to add additional staffing, but you also, you know, would like the revenue to come in. So it's a fine fine balance and an important part of this budget process.
Mm hmm, so.
All right. So the only other thing was I just had, you know, here for you to look at, what is one percent of the current budget? It's just shy of fifty thousand, so on and so forth from there. Um, so I'm gonna stop sharing my screen so that I can see everybody better. Um, next steps, you know, obviously, as we started out saying this, Ken, and then Darius reiterated that, you know, this is the full wants and needs. If we had no budget restrictions and and didn't need to tighten the belt, this is what we would be looking at. Um, but we know that we have work to do. So I I guess the question is right now um what kind of guidance does the committee want to give us as the administration moving forward to come back to a meeting in February um with a lower number, you know, and having an idea of what a goal is and um, you know, Ken, I don't know if you have any other insight into where the town is at as well.
I I have I have no insight as to where the town is at. I mean, there there are tremendous demands on the town this year and and going forward. Um, I don't know if Julie's still on, but if she wanted if she wanted to say anything about what might be happening, you're more than welcome to, Julie.
I'm kind of happy enough to let you all um work your way through it, but you're right, there are, there's a number of things that the town would like to do this year. One area a a lot of it is capital expenses, so that doesn't really apply to the general operating fund. Um, but there is one area that the town has been very lacking in in past years, which is maintenance, the maintenance budget for the town buildings. And there's a definite recognition that more funding is required, that we are not keeping up with maintenance. Um, and so that's one area that we would hope to be able to put money in, but you know, everybody's in the same spot you are. If you, you know, if you ask where do you take it away? Um, but.
Well, thank you, and and thank you for listening in tonight to get a sense as to how we start and what we're looking at. So. Um, so, I mean, I obviously, this is the the starting point. Um my hope would be that we would be down, you know, in terms of that quote percentage increase. I hate always having to deal just in percentage numbers as opposed to services, et cetera. But the fact that you have some services, you know, upticks and it it's not just a level budget, that there are some new services in here. Um, I'm hoping that we can we can work towards providing those services and and still you know, have the impact on the town budget that we have tried to strive to have over the last five to ten years and and stay in that two and a half percent to three percent range for our requests, so. That's just me.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
I just um wanted that to clarify, to understand um the zero amount for the out-of-district tuition. What does that, what just what does that mean? If I I, Shelley, do you know?
So the out-of-district tuition is any student that we service outside of Deerfield Elementary. So it's special education students that are town residents that we have to place in another school, whether it's a another Massachusetts public school or a collaborative or a private program. We actually do have out-of-district placements. Um, when you see the full spreadsheet, and this is not new, this is a recurring expense. We've had students going out of district for some years. We pay for it currently um from school choice funds, which is actually a good place to pay for that type of expense because it's one of those expenses that fluctuates year to year depending on what students go in or out of the district. It hits the budget, though. That's why you see the zero there.
Gotcha. Okay, because I was confusing it with like if it was students who decided to go to other schools. It's not, it's not. It's just special education servicing. Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay.
Uh, I just have a question. Uh, I'm looking at the three thousand line the fifteen percent increase, but I'm thinking that health and transportation, that's gotta be a lot of inevitable increases currently, correct?
So the primary increase for that is twofold. One, um, that part-time position that I talked about, that we have two part-time LPNs this year, and Tina and I had talked about moving that full-time. So that'll actually come down a little bit because that is gonna stay at twenty hours. Um, and the other big impact there is the nurse leader position that's fully hitting budget this year. Um, our transportation is not expected to increase for regular transportation. Um and Deerfield's uh special education transportation, I don't think is expected to go up significantly over the current budget amount either. It's it's primarily driven by that nurse leader position.
Mm hmm.
Okay, thanks.
A-anything else? Okay. Well, thank you, Shelley and Tina and Darius and all others that participated in the in the budgeting process. Um it's 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 a good start and I look forward to to the uh continued iterations as we move forward. So, thanks. The next item on the agenda would be acceptance of a gift from Yankee Candle Company. Tina mentioned it in her report. Um, I believe it was a ten thousand dollar donation. Is that correct? Or no, not that, I mean, not ten thousand, five? I can't remember what it was, four. I have a four. We have four thousand, I'm sorry. Um, but uh they do continue, Yankee Candle does continue to support the schools and has done that throughout their time in the town of Deerfield, so. Um. I would like to see if we could acknowledge and accept the gift of four thousand dollars for the uh Deerfield Elementary School. And uh we would acknowledge it as a school committee back. I know it's already acknowledged, but yes, yes.
So moved?
Um, any further discussion?
Yeah, Ken, I just want to throw in there that uh just so that those viewing, Yankee Candle gave four thousand dollars to Frontier and also to Wheatley Elementary, where they also have um shop in in Wheatley as well. Um, they also gave um fifteen hundred dollars worth of scholarships to six fifteen hundred dollars per student for sixteen Frontier graduates.
Wow.
So, um, this is just a part of the generosity of the community.
Mm hmm, okay. Um, anything else? If not, we'll proceed to a roll call vote. Ken Cutterback, yes? Carrie Echols?
Yes.
David Sharp?
Yes.
Uh, Mary Raymond?
Yes.
And Erica Jacob?
Yes.
Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you for that. Um, we're down to reports. Uh the committee chair has no nothing to report. I know Erica sent uh the um collaborative summary annual reports. Uh, I know some of us had received it or maybe all of us received it directly from the collaborative as well, but um it's it's always nice to get the get the information um and then superintendent.
Um, just to uh jump on, there's only two other small things that are going on. Well, not small things are going on, but we have quick things to say. Uh, we are in the middle of the contract negotiations. Um, and we are, our next meeting is next week um on the twelfth. And um right now, you know, we're both sides are working together and we're making progress, so very pleased about that. And um there is no real anti-racism committee committee report this this month, but um their next committee meeting is uh February ninth. And the community dialogue series that um Jen Smith talked about is going to continue on February seventeenth, and she'll be on at our next meeting to talk a little bit, kind of reminder what's going on there and give us an update there. So those are the other two things that were on my report.
Okay. Very good. Uh, thank you. I there there is no need for executive session. As Darius said, the contract negotiations are are proceeding, but there's nothing substantive to talk about and no updates on the other any other issues. So we do not need executive session this evening. So that brings us down to adjournment. If someone would care to make a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Multiple seconds. Nice. I'll give it to Erica a second. We will go to a roll call vote on adjournments. Carrie Echols?
Yes.
David Sharp?
Yes.
Mary Raymond?
Yes.
Erica Jacob?
Yes.
And Ken Cutterback, yes. We are officially adjourned at seven oh four PM.